I see. Contact.
Call the Newport City Council meeting to order... oh, no. Yes. For Monday, March 20, 2017, 6:30 PM. And we're going to begin with a public hearing concerning the proposed bylaw... zoning bylaw changes, which were discussed at the last meeting. And maybe Charlie can give us an overview of the bylaw changes. I know I was cleaning up language and making something simpler, but if you could just do another brief overview, that'd be great.
All right. Going down through the way I have them stacked here. The Shorelands Control District. We're basically changing nothing. You have to do there is the changes are to conform our bylaw to the state's new regulations so that there's no conflict, one versus the other. And however, if you're on the shoreline, this will have no impact on what you can do or cannot do currently. I think I've got that messy one pad of paper. Another change is the change of the zoning district on East Main Street. And the change is for three properties. One property is where the H&R Block office is now, what used to be the Louis Garnol property, and the property for the Garden and Agway facilities. Those three are currently zoned industrial, which is very limiting for them. They currently are considered non-conforming uses for that reason. What we're changing them to is commercial B-zone. And the reason for that is it allows such things as retail usage office space, which H&R Block is now. It gives the current owners of the Louis Garnol building more options for trying to find occupancy for it. And it basically is also consistent with what's happening on East Main Street. And so that's really being done to help out those three property owners and so on. The other change is we're going to try to implement a certificate of occupancy requirement here in the city. This is done in many other municipalities. Derby has one. There are several reasons for it is, one, when we give a building permit to people to build a property, we currently do not have anything that follows through after the property is built. We have issues that occasionally arise over water and sewage billings and whatnot. We're also getting, or I'm getting, requests from people who try to lease space. I've had to do special permits and write letters where a business is coming into town because their financial institutions will not finance the business until they can prove that they have a legitimate right to be in the building. And with a certificate of occupancy, that will address that issue. So we're getting many reasons why we really need one. And as far as questions that come up, how will it impact somebody? The way I'm setting it up is that you go ahead, you build your property. If you do everything you're supposed to do right now, you comply with the zoning, if you're a commercial, you have your fire marshal's permit, et cetera. It's simply a matter of my checking off all the blanks on the certificate and signing it and giving it to you so you can have it, you know, the day I go out to look at your property. The only holdup would be if somebody either didn't comply with the zoning or they haven't done all the things they're supposed to do, then that would hold up the occupancy... certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
That's about it.
Questions on anyone in the audience? Anybody from the council? Then we close that part of the meeting, and we'll go to the regular council meeting.
What did we vote on?
We'll vote on that on item number five, right after pump the card.
Yeah.
Okay. So the first item on our agenda... a third item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of February 27, March 6, and the special meeting of March 13.
Can I do this all at once? Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of 27 February, 6 March, and 13 March 2017.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Wilson, sent by Mr. Shinet. I believe all the corrections have been made to all the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes of the motion? Then hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. It's an opportunity for anyone to make comments to the council for items which are not on the agenda. Seeing that there are none, we will move on. Next item is discussion about public hearing on proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Invote. And this is where we would need a motion to approve the bylaw changes. If the council has no vote, we need a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning bylaw amendments.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Mr. Shinet. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Item moving on. Item number six is election of city council president.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we appoint John Wilson as the city council president.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? And hearing none, all those in favor...
You can change your motion to elect Mr. Wilson. It's not an appointment election.
It's election, you're right.
I will elect him.
Okay.
Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have... I vote aye. The ayes have it. Now we move on to the city government appointments. First one, city manager, currently held by Laura Dogan. Do we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Laura Dogan as the city manager.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Next one is delinquent tax collector, currently held by Laura Dogan.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Laura Dogan to be the delinquent tax collector.
Motion made. Is there a second?
No second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, sent by Mr. Shinet. Discussion on delinquent tax collector. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. The next one is director of public works, currently held by Tom Burnier.
I will... we're electing or we're appointing?
These are appointments now. These are all appointments now.
Then I will appoint Tom Burnier to be the director of public works.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Next one is chief of police, currently held by Seth DeSanto.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we... I'd like to appoint Seth DeSanto as the chief of police.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Shinet, sent by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I will vote aye. The next one is chief of the fire department, currently held by Jamie Leclerc.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Jamie Leclerc as chief of the fire department.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Zoning administrator, currently held by Charles Elliott.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We appoint Charlie Elliott as the zoning administrator.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made by Mr. Wilson, sent by Mr. Shinet. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Tax assessor, that's currently Spencer Potter is our tax assessor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to appoint Spencer Potter as our assessor of taxes.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Shinet, sent by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion carries. The next one is director of parks and recreation, and we need a motion. It's currently Andrew Capello, but with the restructuring, the recommendation was for Jessica to be the parks and recreation director.
Okay. In that case, I will make the motion to appoint Jessica as our director of public of our Parks and Recreation Department.
A motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I'll vote aye too. Motion carries. The harbor master, currently held by Norbert Blay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Norbert Blay as the harbor master.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made by Mr. Wilson, sent by Mr. Shinet. Discussion on the harbor master position? Seeing none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Harbor commission, which is currently Dave Myers and James Johnson. And I have a question on that, Mr. Johnson. Is it usually two people? Or I thought the commission was set up with at least three.
There's actually five of them.
But, oh, but we're only appointing the ones that are up. You're right. I got mixed up. You're right. They're right. I got mixed up. You're right. So, yeah, it is five. My mistake from looking at this memo.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we appoint David Myers and James Johnson to the harbor commission.
Reappoint, yeah.
Two years.
Two years. Okay. Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded. Answered my question there. Okay. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next is the recreation committee. And the names that have been put forward are Heidi Santar, Aaron Carr, Aaron Larson, Jan Smith, Suzanne Zelif, Renee Hamel-Boudreau, and Marion Gardner.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we appoint the seven names that you just mentioned to the recreation committee.
A motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Shinet, sent by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll vote aye. I keep forgetting I have to vote aye. Otherwise, it doesn't happen. Okay. The next one is the NVDA board, and this is currently held by myself and the city manager. We represent the city to that board.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Laura Dogan and Paul Minette to the NVDA board.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Next one is the economic development district, and that is currently held by myself.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We appoint Paul Minette as our EDC board member.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made by Mr. Wilson, sent by Mr. Shinet. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next one is the cemetery commission, and that is currently held by Fred Ormsby, John Ward Senior, and Dennis Shinet.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We appoint those three individuals to the cemetery commission.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded. Discussion? This is for... this is the commission that oversees the East Main Street cemetery, correct? Just wanted to make that certain for you. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And I'll vote aye.
Aye.
Well, I say yeah. The next one is animal control officer, and that is held by Royce Lancaster. We need a motion for that appointed.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we appoint Royce Lancaster as the animal control officer.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next one is the city tree warden, that's currently held by Robert Goslin. We need a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion that we appoint Robert Goslin as the city tree warden for the city of Newport.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next one is the city attorney, and that's currently Stitzel, Page, and Fletcher. And we need a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Stitzel, Page, and Fletcher as the city attorney.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next one is the development review board, and the members that are up and need to be reappointed if you so choose are Gath Coburn and Harriet Hall. And we would need a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Gath Coburn and Harriet Hall for two years on the DRB.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Is it a two-year or a three-year term?
I don't know. What's the next person do?
The next year, do in 2018.
It's gotta be two years.
So it's a two-year term.
Okay. Because our bill sheet says three-year terms.
Yeah, two or three. Yeah. It does.
I think it's three-year term, Mr. Johnson.
Well, you can appoint one for three and one for two. And get it back on even. Got no 19 on there, no?
No.
It should be one. So just appoint one of them for two years, one for three years, and I get you back on that.
Then I'll amend that motion to make Gath Coburn a three-year term and Harriet Hall a two-year term for the DRB.
Are you okay with that?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. The next one is the health officer, and that is currently held by James Leclerc, who's doing an outstanding job.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jamie Leclerc as a health officer since he's doing such an outstanding job.
Please, I had to say that, Jamie. Sorry. That motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. And discussion? Oh, no. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, Jamie.
Sorry.
The next one is planning commission, and the members that are up are Robert Courier and Daniel Ross.
And are these for two or three-year terms?
We have one vacancy for 2019.
The bill sheet says three-year.
At the last one, vacant 2019, that's the last year?
Yes, that's the vacancy one.
Well, it shouldn't be three years, though. I don't know. Charlie, those three-year terms or two-year terms, DRB?
No, planning.
Ah, planning, I mean. Three, I think. Is it three?
Three. Okay. So it'll be for three-year terms. Once again, it's Robert Courier and Daniel Ross.
Okay. In that case, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we appoint Robert Courier and Daniel Ross to the two, three-year terms in the planning commission.
So a motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. We don't need a non-service officer. The next one is the building safety officer, and that is Charles Elliott right now.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Charlie Elliott as the building safety officer.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next one is something that we still have to do, fence viewer. And we need a motion, and it's currently held by Dennis Shinet, Don Hendrick, and Richard Barra.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Dennis Shinet, Don Hendrick, and Richard Barra to be our fence viewers.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. We do not need X because that was already done. And that was in place.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. That's it for all the appointments. Moving on. The next item is police department, public record fee schedule. And we have the chief here. This was a previous council agenda item, and it's back on the agenda.
Chief? So I sent the council a letter indicating what was going on with the public records policy. The policy has replaced Form 10, in place since 2016. Vermont State Archives and Vermont statute allow for the charging of fees for copies of police reports, but it has to be approved by the city council. And I could find nowhere in the BLCT policy that I adopted that I had ever had the council adopt it. So I printed out the policy for you, and there's on the last page a slot for the mayor's assignments home to attest to if you agree to the policy as written.
So we charge the flat $15 for a written report and $45 for a media report.
Correct. And that's in line with what other departments of the state are doing. We're not at the top end. We're not at the low end. We're kind of in the medium.
Questions from any other council members on this? Then we would need a motion to adopt the public record fees schedule.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adopt these fees for written reports and digital media reports for the police department.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion on the motion? Then hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Do you have a copy for me to sign?
I have your job.
And I'd like to just handwrite and change the correct date. Oh, let me ratify that. New business, Mr. Johnson? Any other new business, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Wilson? Mr. Shinet?
Yes. I had someone stop in and see me one day about a drain over on Bluff Road. It's by Fred's Tanks, and it needs some attention because on one side it's broken. It's gone right down or something. And that should be fixed before the whole drain just collapses down. That's all.
Any new business?
No new business, thank you.
Older business, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I have the bike rack that's down in front of Brenda's that was knocked out by maybe our tractor or snuggle or hitch. It should be set back in the hole at least so somebody didn't fall in it and sue the city, or more importantly, so they don't hurt themselves. And the second one is, you sent us an email that after the storm, this rail area was going to get fixed, but we're pushing into two weeks now. Last Thursday, Friday, and today were pretty decent days.
My understanding is Gaze is going to be here tomorrow morning?
That's what I was told.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't see Tom back there.
Tom, yeah, Tom's back there.
He was supposed to be here last Friday, but...
Yeah. Okay.
It's not a very big job, and he probably was tied up on something else. He told me he didn't need to be here long.
Okay. I've got no old business, anything? Motion.
The next Centennial Planning Committee meeting is scheduled for April 17, 2017, at 5 o'clock here in this room. We're making games.
Yes. It's going to be a good event. Nice event.
It's going to be a great event. I'm looking forward to it.
So I have old business? And the next regular council meeting will be April 3, 2017, here in the council room. And now we need an executive session pending litigation, contract, one VSA, 13A, 1A, A1E.
Just curious, are you expecting to have something that you feel like sharing with the public at the end of this?
We expect any action?
It's possible that we might have a motion to make after this one.
But if I contact you tomorrow, you'll remember it?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So we need... That's what we need to do. We need the motion... We need the motions to go into executive session. We need these two motions. Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Can I read it for all of them?
No, we're not to have you do that last year.
Just go ahead and read it. Step one, a motion for the board specific finding the premature general public knowledge of the subjects of the anticipated executive session tonight would fully increase the board need for persons involved with substantial discipline which has been stepped through in the motion to enter the executive session council.
No meeting.
For confidential, private communications, consumer contracts, and pending litigation. So a motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Yes, then all those in favor say aye. The ayes have it, motion carries.